Chelsea Telemedia, okay. If you folks could take the conversation outside or end it. Welcome to the January 22nd, 2024 meeting of the Chelsea Select Board. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is one nation, united in the book, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, first on our agenda is several public service announcements. Virginia, you can give us those.
First up, we have a notice of nomination papers for the annual town election. The townwide offices that are available include two select board members for three years, one school committee member for three years, three planning board members for three years, one planning board associate member for one year, one board of health member for three years, two trustees of the public library for three years, and one cemetery commission member for three years. There are also many town meeting rep seats available. There are five for three years in each precinct, and then there are several precincts that have some unexpired terms to fill. If you are interested in applying for, or sorry, taking out papers for the annual town election, I don't see the deadline here. Does anybody remember when it is?
Oh, it says February 9th.
February 9th. And if you just, I would encourage people to take a look at the open seats because there are a lot of positions for which there are more seats open than people who have pulled papers. So there's a lot of opportunity out there to get involved, and all you have to do is look at the homepage and click on the little red chair picture in the news flashes, and that'll take you right to what you need to do. Next up, the Chelmsford Health Department is sponsoring a depression and anxiety support group. It meets every fourth Tuesday of the month from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. at the Chelmsford Center of the Arts in the cabaret room. That's at the parking lot level. And if you want more information, you can email mcameron@chelmsfordma.gov or call And next, also sponsored by the Chelmsford Health Department, the Free Narcan Training for January still has one session that will occur on January 26th at 10:00 a.m. That'll be in the Chelmsford Town Hall in the fire department training room at the lower level, and you can register at www.chelmsfordma.gov. You do need to register. There is limited space available in that class, and if you have any questions, call the Chelmsford Health Department at 978-250-5241. And last, the Chelmsford Police Department Community Wellness and Engagement Division, together with the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee and the Chelmsford Senior Center, are sponsoring a forum on hate crimes and hate incidents with Middlesex District Attorney Mary Ann Ryan. The forum is Thursday, January 25th at 6:00 p.m. at the Chelmsford Senior Center at 75 Groton Road. If you need more information, you can contact dgoen@chelmsfordma.gov.
Okay, thank you. Next up is public input. Is there anybody here that would like to address the board on any topic this evening? Anybody on Zoom, Paul?
There's no one on Zoom.
No one on Zoom. Okay, thank you. All right, we'll go right into committee vacancies then.
Okay. Committee vacancies that are open include the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee with one three-year term. The Board of Appeals has an associate member vacancy for one one-year term. The Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee has one unexpired three-year term. The Commission on Disabilities has two unexpired three-year terms, one unexpired three-year term, and one three-year term available. The Community Action Program Committee has an unexpired three-year term. Council on Aging has an unexpired three-year term and one three-year term. The Cultural Council has two three-year terms. The Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee has one three-year term. The Holiday Decorating Committee has one unexpired term available. The Parade Committee welcomes all applicants for one-year terms. The Public Records Advisory Committee has one unexpired one-year term. The Roberts Field Advisory has two unexpired three-year terms, and the Tree Committee has one unexpired three-year term available. If you are interested in serving on a town board or committee, please complete an online application available on the town website. And for more information, you can contact the Town Manager's Office at 978-250-5202 or tmoffice@chelmsfordma.gov.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're at public hearings, and we have one public hearing this evening. Angelique, if you want to come up and tell us what this is all about.
Good evening, everybody. For the record, my name is Angelique Eliopoulos. I'm here with the law offices of Eliopoulos and Eliopoulos at 9 North Road, and I'm here tonight representing the applicant, Diggy's LLC, to present to you its application for the transfer of an all-alcohol liquor license, which is currently located at Brickhouse Pizza One Central Square. I'm joined tonight by the two applicants, members of the LLC, Diana and James Spalding. Diana would be the proposed manager under the LLC, excuse me, of the liquor license. So just a little bit of background, as you can see, this would be a family-run business. Diane and Jimmy grew up in Chelmsford, have very strong ties to the community, and are extremely excited to take over this well-loved business in town. They're both experienced restaurant owners and also current liquor license holders. A few years back, they opened up Diggy's Pizza in Westford, right on Littleton Road. They've had great success there with an incredible response, not only from that community, but this community as well. In that time, important note, they've had absolutely no issues with their liquor license with anyone in the community, the police, the ABCC. Everything's run perfectly smoothly. Prior to opening that restaurant, they also had extensive bartending experience, and so that certainly has helped them become successful as well. Diane is the manager on that license, and again, is the proposed manager on this license. But if this board approves the transfer and the sale of the business of Brickhouse goes through, that restaurant's going to close down. So I just want that to be clear to the board. The businesses will not exist simultaneously. She won't be the manager under that license anymore. They're going to close that business and exclusively run Brickhouse Pizza. Okay? With regard to the application, your staff is excellent, so they've been a great help in making sure that the application is complete. So hopefully, you have everything in front of you that you need, the application, all the supporting documents. We're not making any requested changes to the business at all, so no changes to the layout, the seating, the hours, or the name. So nothing's changing, except obviously, the ownership will be under new ownership. If you have any questions, of course, I'm here to answer. Applicants are here to answer. As part of your consideration, we'd also ask to waive the board's option to hold over the vote till the next meeting, for primarily all the reasons above that I mentioned. We've got an existing business here, existing restaurant, existing location, experienced license holders. Everyone's gotten their notice. I believe all town boards have signed off on it. There's a few moving parts to the purchase of the business, so we would be grateful for any additional time that we could start to juggle those balls to get everything in place. If the board decides to decline the request for the extension, I believe the next meeting is next week, if I'm correct, which we weren't necessarily expecting. So just know that I would certainly be able to be here. The applicants are taking a very rare vacation away from their other business, so they would be able to participate by Zoom if they could get service where they are. So I could certainly be here, but I just wanted to give the boards a heads up that they would not be able to physically attend.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Does anybody have any questions for Angelique about this application?
I just have one question. On page four, in the checklist, the requirement for the entertainment license fee is crossed out, but then like on page 13, the entertainment is requested, so...
Yes, so they had told me at the town hall that when the entertainment license transfers, you don't have to pay the fee.
Okay, so you will be having this entertainment in the same manner?
That is correct. That's right. So the entertainment will be the same, and I think we'd even given a check, but they gave it back. Sorry for that confusion, but there will be some entertainment there. But again, it's similar to what's happening, you know, at this time.
Thank you.
Okay, and you said the name of the, is not going to change?
No, that's correct.
It's not going to be Diggy's?
It will, it will not be Diggy's.
They're planning to close the Westford?
Yeah.
I didn't even know that they served alcohol.
But I think bring their delicious recipes along, along with them. It's so good, yeah.
I only knew about pizza.
Is this a bigger space for you?
Yes, yeah, much bigger space, so it's a really exciting opportunity. And like I said, you know, grew up in Chelmsford, strong ties to the community, so I think everyone's really excited about it.
Okay, any other questions?
No. I have kind of a procedural question. Is it, is, do we normally issue or transfer liquor licenses before the sale of the business even happens?
Yeah, we usually have to, yeah, there's usually contingent on it.
They need it to finish the sale.
That's correct, yeah. Our purchase and sale agreement, they have.
They don't get the license.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'd like to waive the two-week waiting period.
So do you want to make a motion to just approve it then?
Well, it's a public hearing.
Public hearing, to close the public hearing? Okay, do you want to make a motion?
Do you want to ask if there's anybody that wants to speak first?
Oh, that's right, I should ask that, shouldn't I? Okay, do we have anybody here that would like to speak about this, this transfer of the license?
Hold on, Zoom.
Okay, it looks like we don't have anybody here that wants to speak about it. Okay, now we'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor? Hi, okay. Another motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the transfer of the all-alcoholic beverages restaurant license for Diggy's LLC doing business as Brickhouse Center Pub and Pizzeria from Center Brickhouse Pizza doing business as Brickhouse Center Pub and Pizzeria as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're to our reports and presentations section of the, of the meeting. First up is Chelmsford Open Space Stewardship requesting an irrigation well at Sunny Meadow Farm.
Hi, everyone. I'm Joanne Stanway. I'm representing Phil Stanway from the Chelmsford Open Space Stewardship.
Excuse me, Joanne, do you want to defer until Phil arrives?
No.
All right, because, no, because Phil had sent a message that he may run late, and I said...
We can take things out of order.
I said we could, we could pass over until he arrives.
No, I appreciate that. I thought about it, and I thought, I thought the board might appreciate a more concise presentation.
Once we go past this item, we don't go back to it, so...
I know this is televised, no one tell them, anyway. So the purpose of, of this presentation really is to see if the select board would give their support for us to pursue a grant to fund a drilled well at Sunny Meadow Farm. We became aware of a grant in August when $18,000 was awarded to the town of Littleton for their community farm to install a drilled well. Oh, thanks. I'm going to keep talking, and he can add color commentary. So, and at the time, Phil Stanway's lead steward of the Chelmsford Open Space Stewardship approached Representative Jim Arciero and asked, you know, if he thought it was possible to also have a grant awarded to the town of Chelmsford for Sunny Meadow Farm. And he said yes, as long as we had the okay from the Chelmsford Land Conservation Trust that holds the conservation restriction on the land, and also that the select board would be in favor and be supportive of pursuing this grant. The reason for it would be that, you know, obviously, a drilled well for the purpose of water. We have at Sunny Meadow Farm three community gardens, five native plant pollinator preservation gardens, and six commercial farmers, you know, that are all very productive, and it's a very active, vibrant farm. The problem is, is that we currently rely on the irrigation pond that due to, you know, drought and other factors and high demand, the water level has dropped. We have dug that irrigation pond to bring the water level up, but again, because of high demand, it's, you know, just very draining on that resource, which is really important for everyone who's at Sunny Meadow Farm. The second resource that we have to us is town water, but the, the town water is potable, and for the purposes that we need, which is to rinse off produce and other things, it's, it's more costly than, than the purposes that we needed for. So the third option would be for us to do a drilled well on-site, which is what we would need the grant funds for. And again, we're not asking for anything from the town, but for you to ask the questions that you need to and to say, sure, we'd be happy to lend our support so that we could pursue this grant. We did discuss this with the Land Conservation Trust. They did a review of past minutes and realized that they had previously allowed a drilled well. It's in their minutes, and, and it was in line with the intent of the conservation restriction. We've done some initial research on what we would be asking for, for the grant. We would need to do a drilled well about 410 feet, and the cost would be approximately $30,000. Again, not asking for anything except for, for your support and your questions and guidance as we go through this process. We expect that once, you know, if the funding is approved and, you know, we have everything in place, it could take about 30 days to fully integrate the well, no additional cost to the town. And this is only the second time that the stewardship has looked for a major funding source. The first time was $12,000 for the creation of the accessible raised community garden several years ago. So as we approach our 20th year with the town of Chelmsford, coming up in a couple of years of the Chelmsford Open Space Stewardship, we hope that you will ask the questions you need to and allow us to tell Representative Arciero that we have your support, as well as that of the Land Conservation Trust, so that we can apply for this grant.
Okay, any questions for Joanne?
What is the grant application cycle?
That's a very good question. I will bring my cohort, Phil Stanway, to the microphone.
Honestly, I'm not sure, because I've never done grants. But I did approach him, and he said it might be possible, so, but he wouldn't even, he wouldn't consider moving forward.
See?
That would be Jim.
Oh, okay.
Jim was here, would said, I mean, there was no way to move forward unless we'd have the okay, A, to put it in, and B, the town would be okay to put it in. So once we have that, we'll keep, start looking for grants. I do think we keep rolling the dice out there with Hart Pond being closed as much, and we being just, just up the street. They monitor Hart Pond, the Board of Health does, they don't monitor irrigation pond, and it concerns me.
And you mentioned that the, the trust looked in their minutes and realized there was a well drilled there before. Is that well functional?
Yes, Bill Evans' well.
Okay.
The original question was that drilled well, driven well, dug well. Those are the three different types of wells. So they're all a little different, and we had to make sure a drilled well had already been approved, which it had been. So we're doing the exact same things that Bill Evans was approved with by the town and the Land Conservation Trust to the exact depth, probably isn't it being the same company because they do all these things?
So how did you arrive at the depth requirement and the dollar amount?
The depth requirement is exactly the same as Bill Evans' well, which is right across the stream.
Okay.
And the dollar amount is $25,000 for the well, $5,000 for the electrical hookup, because we would like to go to an electric well for two reasons. One is to get rid of these big gas pumps that we're just churning away, and also being able to put a charging station in there for our electrical equipment and switch over the weed whackers, the lawn mowers, and try to become more green. So at the same time, I just, and using gasoline and storing gasoline on the property is just not one of my favorite things to do, or driving around with my car. So I, and it's easier, simpler to use, but the estimate to that, that value of that pump was about $25,000. Of course, they would look at them, I figured same company, same well, what would be the price now? And that's what they came up with.
May I have one more question?
Sure.
My, my other question, I think, is more for Paul. So what, what is the town's, and what, what is the town's involvement in something like this on the town-owned land, or what should it be? And is there, is there something that has to be done on the town side to validate and get behind the need? Are there other sources of funding that could potentially be available since I, I don't, I don't know what this, this was a grant, not an earmark?
This is a grant, but again, we're just looking at the...
It wasn't an earmark, it was a grant.
It was a grant, but it, that's what, I opened it up and it said, grant for Littleton for well, for drought issues, and the bells went off, and I said, well, one or another, we're going to have to move this forward, so it's time to at least line the ducks up and make sure we...
Okay, well, Paul has a question to him, so let Paul answer.
There's multiple questions. Yeah, you've asked, you've asked multiple questions. You know, Sunny Meadow Farm was purchased and is owned by the town. When we have issues out there of infrastructure, you know, I rely, I rely as the manager on the expertise of the town's DPW in terms of engineering and assistance, and you may recall, we addressed that last summer, we were dealing with the pump system. If there's an issue concerning, you know, water quality or concerns, obviously, I would look towards the Board of Health, and then if there are issues with wetland areas, then, you know, then obviously, we deal with the Conservation Commission.
One other question related to that.
Sure, yeah.
If there's a grant involved, how does the grant money get passed?
Well, the, the grant would be submitted by the property owner, which would be the town.
It has to be submitted by the town, and the money has to go into, to the town.
Right, right.
Okay.
Because, because the town owns the land, and the, you know, the, the funds would, would go to, and make a capital improvement on town-owned land. So my suggestion would be that this, you know, this be referred to, for Phil and Joanne to work with, you know, Public Works, I think, is the starting point in terms of, I think the questions that you raised, what type of well, you know, where would it be located? How would it, who would it serve? How would it, you know, function and so forth? And then you go into the question you've asked about funding sources. There, there are funding sources available. The most notable would be Community Preservation Fund, which, which has served as, as funding for capital improvements, both at Sunny Meadow Farm in the past for other components of the farm, as well as other, you know, improvements of this nature on capital, open space. And, and that's something, funding cycle, as you know, is spring town meeting and fall town meeting. So, you know, and again, we welcome it, we look at...
Is that anything that could be put into the cycle for spring town meeting?
It would have to get in by next month, because they, they met last week, and they're going to...
I'm just thinking about the, the farming season is coming.
Yeah, they, they would, you know, they would have to, you know, get in for their meeting in February. They meet the third Wednesday of every month, and they are going to meet the third Wednesday in February, and if they were, if they were getting onto this warrant for spring town meeting, they'd have to be there by then, because the, you'll be signing the warrant on February 26th for spring annual town meeting. The other, the other issue is, is then you've got procurement issues and prevailing wage and other issues, because it's, it's municipal property. You know, if, if the town does receive a resource of a grant, usually those grants are, you know, are required to utilize, you know, public procurement, prevailing wage, and other aspects of, you know, Public Works Construction. So that's, that's how that would work. And again, that would be...
Do you know anything about this grant, or any more insight on the cycle time for the grant, the application period?
I'm not, I'm not familiar with the, this grant that's referenced in the news article, the Food Security Infrastructure Grant Program. I'm, I'm not aware of the particulars of that grant program, so I don't know what the funding cycle is for this coming year, what, you know, in terms of what the application period is, what, when the decisions would be made, and so forth. I, I just don't have that information. I'm just not that familiar with that funding source. So again, I, I appreciate what Phil and Joanne are doing. I just think that we need to augment their support with more technical support that can be provided by the town's, you know, Public Works, engineering, and, and obviously our land use and health boards, if, if there are issues of, you know, operation out there, because that's, that's how it's worked in the past, and that's how it would work in the future in terms of making an improvement. And as you said, it was, as they noted, it was, it was done when we did the improvements for, for, you know, Evans Farm, you know, out there on the site.
So I'll just finish out my commentary then. I, I assume and accept that there's a need. I'm not challenging whether there's a need. I don't have a problem supporting, looking into this. I just, it feels like we got to connect the dots, because I don't think cost can accept a grant or apply for a grant, and so that, to me, all the dots need to be connected to just validate, validate the need, the approach, and how we get the funding, and who needs to be involved.
Yeah, I would agree with, on almost everything that you have brought up and, and said, and I'm glad you kind of referenced the earmarks, because if it was an earmark, if that's what they were looking for, then I think it, this is, you know, the right approach would be for us to take that and present it to our legislative delegation the next time we meet them. But as we know, the state is very short on cash these days themselves, and there's a lot, you know, so many needs in the town right now. But if it is, you know, truly a grant that would be specific for this, that, that's their, you know, the intent, then yeah, I would, yeah, suggest that you follow what Paul, the, you know, what Paul had suggested. Talk to DPW and CPC could be a quick, quick way to get those funds if they're available and if Community Preservation Committee agrees.
Again, this is the first step. We, we know this, we've had a couple of times where we've had to shut the water off. Three times now, one time we had to people truck water in for almost three weeks, and with the number of times Hart Pond closed, it's, it's, it's not a matter of if, it's when. And so we're trying to get forward, so we don't end up, you know, if it takes a year, we plan to mitigate, we're going to put filters on the system this year, we're going to scrub the tanks completely clean. We're going to mitigate this as much as we can, but I just don't want to be in the middle of a summer and shut the water off, or have this, have it shut down, and, and we have to switch to town water, because that would just be crazy.
So for clarification, we don't expect that we would need the funding for this season?
We can, we have, we can mitigation, we can mitigate through this season. But again, it depends on the weather.
True.
And it depends on, you know, if, if farmers draw more water, or they put the drip irrigation on. So we're just, we're looking at, we can see the end of the road.
And I think with help from Paul's staff, we, we need to validate whether this grant program is even still existing, what the site, and do, what are the other alternative sources of funding, CPC or other?
It's a step to know that, that this is a problem and be somewhat proactive than reactive, because climate change is just beating us up, something fierce, and I just don't want to deal with 140...
Climate change is not on our agenda tonight.
Community garden is beating, you know, yelling that there's no water. So if, if we have it, if we have it in concept that the town would support it, we will then start talking to DPW, start looking for grants.
I think it goes the other way around. We need to get, you know, have DPW look at it and, and, you know, see what's, what's there, and then, yeah, see if the grant is available. So I don't know that we're ready this evening to, to give our, you know...
A vote.
A vote, or anything like that.
If, if the concept wasn't acceptable to the board, I wouldn't move forward.
Yeah, so then...
With even spending the time to, to research stuff.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if Aaron or George have any com, any other thoughts or anything on this, if...
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, I think it's great. But yeah, I agree, you'd have to see more of a plan, and I'm curious, the, the depth of the well, you just got it from across the street.
Bill Evans drove 410 feet down.
Is that more than sufficient from like a capacity standpoint?
Well, it's enough to power up his giant greenhouses.
So it's more than you need, right? Which is, you should, you should plan for more than you need, and for future growth is my, kind of my point.
And we're also looking at if the pond, which is habitat, gets really low...
Yeah.
We can pump into it and not have all the fish die and stuff. So there's, we've thought about A, B, C, and D on this one. We want something that could, in the long term, meet all our needs for the next 20 years, so I don't have to deal with it again.
Yeah.
When was the last time they, it was used, last year? Was it last year it was used, in use, or was it, or was it...
The irrigation pond?
Yeah.
It's used all the time.
Yeah, we were able to use it last season.
The well?
The well, Bill Evans uses it all the time. He uses his well continuously. He's always pumping out of that. That supplies that... That supplies that whole side of the farm.
So I think what we need from the Select Board is just in, in concept for us to be able to go back to Representative R. Sierra and, and say, you know, the, the Select Board has agreed to allow us to learn more about this particular grant and other grants-
Sure.
-that could be available to us.
In cooperation with whoever DPW assigns.
We all go through the town, we don't do anything, it's not, it's not signed off up by the town. We just bring, we'd like to bring a more detailed plan with them, that's beefed out, not just, "Hey, we need a well." We'd like to say, "We leave a well, this is the cost, these are the three prices, this is what needs to be done, this is the engineering that's checked." We like to do it professionally. So we're just looking for the okay, because come the end of the day, it's owned by, and run by, you know, this group here. So we wouldn't go forward without.
Yeah, well, I, you know, I, I think you can tell that everybody, everybody favors it, we just need more detail, and for you to-
That's what you can, now, now we'll stop putting the dots in.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else, Paul?
Nope, that's fine, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Okay, next up is Carl Bischoff to tell us about the conservation restriction for the Warren Pole property.
Good evening, Carl Bischoff, with the Charleston Conservation Commission, and I'm going to give you an update on the status of the conservation restriction at Warren Pole. The August 8th update I gave you was essentially, at that time, we had an agreement with the Land Trust on the state of the document. We had a few open issues that have been updated. In the meantime, we had many typo and formatting issues, we had some wording changes. We also added a, a number of purposes to the document at the beginning, that I don't believe were in the original template. But we also updated it to the latest state template, which is a, a good thing to do when you're submitting to the state, to make sure you have the latest state template, which changed from the, uh, original template three years ago. So in the meantime, we've been working with the Land Trust on this, and we pretty much are in agreement on everything, but it, I would call it the last minute, we've had a, a new, uh, request to look at the meadow and the scenic protection of the meadow. And, um, we feel that the way the document stands as is, um, is adequate, uh, the, and you have a copy of it in your, in your package. Sort of, as I said at the last minute, we were having some disagreements with the Land Trust on this, and in fact, Scott's here from the Land Trust, representing the Land Trust, and I'm happy to have him come up and give a, give his point of view. Um, we, we feel that the document shows, um, everything, all the values and everything that we think is important for the, for the, uh, conservation restriction. The specifics about how you manage the site should be in a land management plan, which we are actively working with. We have a, a third-party, uh, Oxbow Associates, we're working on a, a botany inventory, uh, for the site, and for, that will be the basis for our ongoing land management plan. Land management plan would be where we would put in the specifics for how to take care of the meadow. So that's kind of where we're at. We do still have some open issues, um, that we're still trying to close. Though the BDR, the baseline document report, has been completed, uh, by the, uh, Ann Capra. The official plan is almost complete for the second easement. The first easement is done, that's been complete and recorded, that was the Hall Road, uh, easement. The second easement is still open, um, waiting for that to be completed. And the other deliverable is the Asbilt Plan of the driveway and parking lot, um, that the DPW will deliver. Those last couple of things are not required to submit to the state, so those can be included when we record the CR at the registry, which honestly, it could be many months away when, before that happens. So I guess, I, I was hoping to be asking for your approval for the document as it stands. From conversations in the last couple of days with the Land Trust, they're still not comfortable with the way it is. I, I feel that the way the document is right now, the way you have it submitted in your package is adequate, I think it's ready to go. But I'm, I'm happy to let Scott, um, give a short, um, slightly different perspective, I guess, would be the way to put it.
Thanks, Carl. Uh, I'm Scott Veenier, I'm the Vice President of the Chelmsford Land Conservation Trust. The one remaining sticking point we have is, we're looking to get protections for the meadow, uh, recorded into the conservation restriction itself. So Carl's talked about a management plan for it, and if you look in the town's archives, there are any number of plans for the various open space properties that were never implemented, for whatever reason. Some of them were just overly ambitious, some of them just got forgotten about. So we're looking to have that protection have the force, or have that plan have the force of the conservation restriction behind it. Because without active care and maintenance, uh, that meadow will get overgrown with invasives or revert to forest. I guess best case would be revert to forest, worst case, overgrown with invasives. And there just aren't any other meadows in town, and that meadow's been there for 400-plus years. We'd like to see it protected. So we're working on coming up with the final language to incorporate the management plan into the conservation restriction, so that there's some enforceability to it.
Okay, anybody have any comments, questions, uh, on this topic?
So, can I just add, you, you-
I'm sorry, wait for talk.
Oh, okay.
You have a copy of the document, um, it was in your package. That's the document that more or less is equivalent to what I presented back in August. The, the prohibited and allowed and all of that, nothing really has changed there. The only thing that's different is what, what Scott had just, just mentioned, which some of the wording he just told me before the meeting, I was like, "Oh, okay," you know, I, that was, that was new to me from, you know, from Friday, uh, or Thursday. So, uh, I'm not, I'm, I guess I'm a little, I'm not sure what I'm asking, because I was originally gonna come in here asking for your approval for the document contingent on getting the Land Trust to, to, to let us move forward, but, um, I, I'm not feeling like we're gonna be able to do that, uh, as, as it stands right now. So maybe I'm saying it's just an update at this point.
Can you tell us where the verbiage is that you're, that you're still having, or is there any-
It's not in there yet.
The document, yeah, that's not in there, that's the point.
You know that's being changed, or it's not in there?
That's the point, it's not in there. And, and our position is, we don't need it in there. It would be in the, it would be in the land management plan, which is a separate document. What Scott's suggesting is that the, the putting, referencing the land management plan specifically in the document would, would give it more power. That's kind of new to me.
So if you scroll to prohibited-
Get to the mic.
Oh, sorry. If you scroll to the prohibited acts, uh, this would be adding a, a paragraph number 14 there.
Thought you were still in the values, okay.
No.
Yeah, so there is no 14, it, it goes up to 13.
I mean, I guess my thought on this, um, I understand what you're trying to do, Carl, and, and I understand what Scott's trying to do, and, you know, representing the, the Land Trust. And I know in the past, it's always been, what, what we see is the final document that everybody agrees to. And so I guess I would be uncomfortable, um, approving this until we see some, what the Land Trust is, is finally decided on, on approving themselves. Um, I don't know how everybody else feels about that, if they, if they're ready to give it to, you know, approve it for Kyle contingent on, but I'd wanna see what those contingencies are, quite frankly.
Well, the, the only contingency would be this one item.
Right.
I, I believe, that's, that's the only thing. And so I guess, if there's questions on anything else on the document, if you can let us know now, that would be good to know, because we could, if there's something you saw in there that you didn't like, or you thought we should clarify, that would be helpful. Because we really do wanna get this done and get this submitted to the state at some point in the near future.
I don't, um, I agree with Pat, I think that we need to know what we're voting on, but, um, and I don't have any, any inputs or concerns about what's in here. I guess I, I just have an education question for myself, because I, I understand what Scott's saying, and I understand what you're saying. What is, and, and throughout this document, it says that the grantee, um, has to give written approval unless it's unreasonably, that shouldn't be unreasonably withheld. And my interpretation of that is that's for the Land Trust to protect what the town wants, in terms of the use of the land, and to make sure those checks and balances are in place forever. But in the, in the establishment of this agreement itself, what is, and I, I don't mean this, um, in a confrontational way, but what is the Land Trust's role? Like, where, the town owns the land-
Town purchases the land.
And so the town is trying to say, "This is how we want to preserve the land." And my understanding was that you bring a Land Trust on board to help you kind of basically preserve how you want to own the land and run it in perpetuity. And it feels like this is turning into a negotiation, which I didn't think this is, that's really what this was all about. I, I thought it was that you bring a Land Trust body on board to help you enforce what you want forever, after we're long and gone, not to tell you what they're going to enforce. And so that's where my head's hurting a little bit, is like why we can't come to resolution, because I never pictured that this was a negotiation. And, and so if I, like, if I'm off base, let me know, but I'm very, I'm very confused about why this is turning into a negotiation.
You're, you're, you're right. It's strictly speaking, if you were to talk swim lanes, the town owns the property, the town defines what the use of the property will be, the town defines the values, the town defines the terms. The Land Trust has to agree to be able to hold the town to those terms.
And if, if the Land Trust, if the Land Trust has input that we haven't thought about, and we wanna put it in, great, but like, where, that's, that's, that's a process, not a negotiation.
You're, you're understanding is correct, because if the land class, if the Land Trust declines, then the town has to go right to go find another qualified entity to hold the, the restriction. So in other words, so you're, so you're understanding, your, your understanding is correct, Virginia. What, what's happening here is, because the Land Trust are stakeholders in the community, okay, as opposed to with third-party like the, what, if you look at the example of the property, they just put a restriction in into Lowell, they, they go outside the community, you know, I think it's the trustees of reservation to somebody who's holding Raleigh's farm. And, 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 and so, but here, I think what you're hearing from are people who have a stake in the community, including residents of the community and taxpayers in the community, and they're providing their perspective. But you're right, essentially, at the end of the day, it's the town who purchased the property, who owns the property, who's gonna operate and manage the property, making its preference on uses, and then, and then engaging the Land Trust to hold the restriction to enforce that. The same process is going to happen with Cooley's Farm. We have to put a restriction on that property. So what's happening there is very similar. The town is going to decide, and we've asked the assistance of the task force, the recommended uses of the property, that will come back, um, to this board for, for approval of a mi, of a, like, open space land use plan for the property. Then there will have to be a restriction, um, drafted, and then a third party will enforce the restriction. So that's, you're, you're, you're spot on, Virginia, with your understanding of how this process works.
Okay, thank you. There was one question that I had, actually, before you, I turned my mic back over. In section, it's on page, starts on page 10. It's section E, I don't know what the parent section is for that. I think it's 15E. It says notifying grantee, and it talks about, um, the, the grantor has to apply for things like educational uses, uh, 60 days in advance, and then the grantee has 60 days to turn that around. And I just, again, um, is that a typical turnaround time and review time? So like, if you had a, if somebody, a schoolteacher wanted to use the land for a field trip, they'd have to plan probably six months ahead of time to do that, according to the way this is written. They've gotta get the, the application done, you get, we get 20, 40 days, you get, was it 40, 60 days, excuse me? We each get two months. Is that, is that reasonable, or is it-
So, I'm rusty on the specifics, specifics of the timing of this, I don't remember the details on this, but, um-
It's on pa, it's page 10 to 11 is where it is.
I'm looking at that notice and approval, but that's for, that kind of depends on each of the, um, different areas, and so things like if, if, we don't need the approval for somebody to do a field trip, or something like that.
But is, that's not considered educational purposes? Because that was concluded in the-
Yeah, sure.
So something like a field trip would probably still qualify under passive recreation, which is already allowed.
Okay.
Um, and therefore, wouldn't need direct, you know, approval for each instance?
A wedding would fall under this?
Yes. Something like that.
They're planning far ahead, and, but, but so if somebody's trying to book a wedding venue, right?
Yeah, I, I think the, the 60 days is really an outside limit.
Right.
I know, in general-
It's faster?
Yeah.
Yeah.
When, when we've gotten, um, requests, um, from, uh, other properties, we've been able to turn it around, sometimes if it's something real simple, um, just by email in a couple days.
Yeah.
Or, uh, for more, things that require more discussion at our next monthly board meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, historically, we haven't seen that issue.
I don't have any other questions.
Okay, and I know Mr. Harrington was waving his hand, do you have concerns about water? Is that what you were gonna bring up?
Yes, it is.
And, and there are references. Just so you know, this, um, protection of the premises will preserve potential municipal wellfields and water supply, and there are other references, so.
Okay, so that's taken care of.
Yeah. Okay.
So what I heard was, um, not ready to take a vote on approving the document as it stands, I understand that, so we'll come back with a, a fully agreed-to, uh, document sometime very soon.
I mean, I know it's been going on a long time, do you think that could be done in three weeks for the board's February 12th meeting, or is it something that's gonna take a month to the February 26th meeting?
I know I won't be here then.
February 20, February 26th?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so we'll expect you in a month?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think it's just helpful.
Thank you.
I know this has been a lot of work on both sides, so thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, next up is, uh, DPW Director Christine Clancy with our monthly ARPA update.
Good evening, I'm here tonight to give the monthly ARPA update. And so just to give an overview, uh, we've been tracking the projects, so to date, 56 projects, um, have been allocated to ARPA funds. In total, that's about, uh, 9.5 million, sorry, it's my notes, $9.5 million, which leaves about a million dollars left of un, unallocated ARPA funds. And that includes the contingency that we are carrying in the spreadsheet. Of that, 82% of the projects have been procured, and of the procured amount, 68%. So there hasn't been that much change since last, last month, right now. To give an update, and I did update the, the attached spreadsheet too, which again, just to quickly, um, provide a summary, the blue projects are all projects complete, all spent invoiced. The green are projects that have been procured, but they're still underway. The yellow ones have been mostly procured, we're just working out some of the details. And then the red ones, um, are the ones where we still need to procure. And so to give a highlight of some of the, um, there's been movement in a lot of, so as you see the green here, um, these are a lot of the school projects that we are, have procured, but we're just go, in this middle phase, and so a lot of this work is either happening in April vacation, or sometimes in the summer. And so we are tracking that, there's no, it doesn't seem to be any issues with the procurement, or, sorry, with the, um, the timeline of those construction projects, uh, or any cost increases. We are, we are tracking the, um, into, uh, the estimated proj, projected forecast for those projects. And then if you scroll down a little further, there's the red, we start to get to the, I And then if you scroll down a little further, there's the red, we start to get to the, recall the red projects, link to the tab, and I know these have been red for a while. We've honestly, we've just been focusing on some other projects right now. We have a new, for facilities, a new projects, project manager that is starting at, into this month. And this is one of his first projects and I've actually, we have a bid schedule that we track internally at DPW. And so TAB is slated to go out February, March. So that will, I'm happy to hopefully see that soon change to a different color. And then scrolling towards the bottom of the, these projects with the recently allocated projects. The, a lot of them being drainage projects and we, the watershed analysis that RFP has been issued, that is out soliciting RFPs. We did have a lot of people pull that RFP consultants looking at it. So that's, that, those, that proposal is due February 7th. And then we'll, we'll review them and make a selection. And so that's on target. And then the rest of the projects right now, they're being designed by engineering. There is an RDA component to a lot of those. And then also I think NOI component for the stream cleaning project. So we're just right now establishing those timeframes, frames in this, and doing, advancing those designs. But we're looking at a March, April procurement for those as well. And then the last one on here, which has been procured and we're implementing is the, the, the flow meters for at the five stations. So that should be something completed actually within the next couple of months. And that looks like it's going to be right along the, the dollar value that we had anticipated. So I think in summary, there hasn't been a great amount of updates to show in the spreadsheet in the past month, but we're, all these projects are moving forward. There's no big red flags from what we've procured to date. And I think really by March, which is really start to see a lot of these things, especially April, really start to change.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for this report?
Thank you. All right. So onto the next, this is a request to add no parking, no parking signs along Elm Street. This request has made to, was made to DPW. It was reviewed by the traffic committee. This is adjacent to the Cranberry Bog parking area. It's a pretty popular location where sometimes people overflow in park along Elm Street. Elm Street in that section is only 22 feet wide. It is two lanes. So really that only allows for 11 foot travel lane in each direction, really no room for parking. So the adjacent residents had complained about concern with vehicles parking along that stretch. And they do see it often, especially in, when it's, you know, more nicer weather or people are hiking. So we looked at installing no parking signs on the eastern side, I get, well, the eastern side of the street. On the Cranberry Bog parking space. We did look at putting on both sides and I think one, one of the residents was opposed to that and wanted just on the. I guess the, the concern is really just on that side adjacent to the Cranberry Bog parking. So we would propose to add no parking signs essentially 200 feet from the entrance going in either direction. On one direction, on, I guess, as pictured here, it really would be on the, it, there's a bend too in, in the road. So carrying that no parking signs through that bend. I don't know if there's any questions about this request.
The no parking would be on one side of the road, but they could still park on the other side?
So the, I guess they, people typically do not park on that side of the road. I think that, that resident said she has put up, has put up like the, the plow, like the plow sticks. And has put up different, she said she, boulder. So if, I, I first honestly did recommend both sides. Just because if people don't park on one side, naturally you might move to the other side. And the resident did strongly suggest only one side. So I said, well, I mean, I guess we just heard to try one side. This is the side that people do park on. People aren't currently parking on the other side. And in terms of timeline, I mean, we can buy these signs, yeah, pretty quickly and install them. I'd probably just not in this deep, you know, when it's 15 degrees outside, but we would install it soon. And I don't, probably won't, the problem won't come back until the spring. So I would say definitely by the spring, we would have them installed.
So that, that's parking area there. How many, how many cars does it, does it hold now? What's the capacity?
I have to check the count. Sure. Yes, thank you.
So we, we just increased the parking lot by three spots, I believe it was. And so we're at, I think we're up to eight spots now.
Oh, okay. I thought more than that.
Originally five or six. I think it's up to 10 now. And so the, as, as Christine said, the neighbors were very concerned when we were doing this. We had a conservation commission discussion about this and we had some discussions. And part of, part of increasing the parking lot was also to get some of these signs put in. So we're very much in support of, of what they're doing.
Okay.
Is there, is there any, maybe you can stay, is there any, are there any plans to further increase the parking there? Is there potential for that parking lot to get any bigger or is it?
Technically.
That's what we just did.
Technically, yes, you could go further, but you'd start getting really close to one of the neighbor's driveway. I, I don't see the need for that, but with where we've increased it, how much we have. I, I'd rather wait a few years and see if, if we have much overflow. But right now I think we're in much better shape.
Thank you. Can I ask another question? From the, the blind curve perspective, does it make sense to have, is that side? The side that I guess would be most affected by the, the curve of the road? From a visibility standpoint?
Well, I think from invisibility, I think if people are parking, it creates that blind curve. And so by having the no parking, that should hopefully address the problem. I mean, it's, as it is, it's a narrow road. It's, it's, it's not a, it's a local where it's not at one of our main arterial roads. So I think, I think having the no parking sign will help. I, I think the more immediate, we see people parking more immediately near the entrance. But I guess there, at least the residents had said that there was sometimes people parked through that curve. So having the no parking signs, and then the police will be able to, will be able to enforce it. I don't think from a safety perspective, we've had issues in, in discussions in the traffic committee otherwise. It's more just, I think the, it's not, the road was not intended to have people parking on the edge of the road.
I'm still a little confused. Are they parking there because there is not enough parking capacity or?
I think it's just on some of these really nice days where people want to go for hikes. And maybe also, I mean, I just know personally, you know, going to some locations, especially when COVID, it was, you know, people would go out and try to be outdoors. So I don't know if it's a, a factor from the COVID.
It's just a convenience factor to park in the road instead of going to the parking lot?
Well, the parking lot is probably full.
Well, that's, so that's, I mean, I think that's what Pat was getting at too, is we can, like, I'm not opposed to putting the no parking signs up. But it seems like there might be a, a bigger problem to solve if we don't have enough capacity for parking.
What, what they may end up doing is traveling for, there are other entrances to the Cranberry Bog property. They may end up traveling basically further down over into Carlisle and parking there.
I mean, I think it's more likely that they're probably just going to park on the other side of the road, to be completely honest.
If they do, we'll come back after consultation with the neighbor. Because again, as Christine mentioned, that was our original intent was to do both sides of the road.
Yeah.
And, and.
I mean, if it were me personally and I told you to go for a hike, I would probably just park on the opposite side of the road to be completely honest.
We'll, we'll, we'll monitor it and see how it goes.
You know?
And, and, and hopefully, like I said.
And your license plate number is?
We've, yeah. No, but we've historically addressed it, as Carlos mentioned, the park, Cranberry Bog parking lot. In, in cooperation and in agreement with, with the Kent family who owns the property across the street. And so that's what we're trying to continue. So I think if there are adverse impacts of this, we would then consult with the neighbor. And then hopefully come back with an agreed upon plan of modification. But originally she, she asked, as Christine noted, for us not to do both sides. So.
I'm afraid she'll be going out there picking up her plow.
We'll see how it goes. And if it doesn't work out, we'll talk with her and then, you know, cause, cause she'll agree as well. She, you know, it, it's, it's, it's worked well for, you know, at least, you know, a generation. And hopefully it will continue the, the relationship with the neighbors.
Yeah. So we'll mon, I think that's key is like, we're going to put these signs in place and then we'll kind of, we'll keep an eye on it. And the police too, will have the authority to, you know, enforce it now with the no parking signs. And so we can monitor it just to see how it's going.
Okay. Anything else for Christine this evening?
I need a motion for you to approve the no parking.
Boy, I'm always slacking today.
I'll make a motion to approve the request to establish a no parking zone along Elm Street adjacent to the entrance to the Cranberry Bog parking lot as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, a motion in a second. All in favor? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is our continued policy discussion on our recognition and monuments and memorials. And I made the changes that we talked about at our last meeting. You know, I don't know where we want to go from here. If there's anything else we want to amend or change or add to or remove from. And what we want to do, if we want to set up a committee to do this or, or not. George, any thoughts?
I just think it's so hard.
It is.
It's just. We were talking about that earlier and just, there's just so many people. And, you know, you can go back so many years and, you know, and I don't know. I, I, I think it's going to be very difficult to do it and do it. Do it right. I don't know. I really, you know, I mean, there was so many people have done so much, you know what I mean? And over the years and whatever.
But that's why you think we need a committee, right?
I guess, but then, you know, where do you stop? And I mean, you know, and how many, how many, how many statues and memorials?
Yeah.
You want to put up? I mean. I don't know. I mean, I don't, I think there's a lot of people who do so much and they're not looking for any recognition. And there's some that don't do much and that's all they want is recognition. So.
Well, this, I mean, this started when people were coming in and wanting to, to put things in different locations without any guidance.
Well, I agree with that.
And so that's kind of part of what this would be, would be to, to put some control on that.
That should get approvals before.
And, and I, and I also agree with you that this should, you know, it would be good if, if we had a committee that was going to do that part of it. They could also periodically review, you know, any other thoughts or recommendations on, on persons or groups that, that may also deserve recognition. Similar to what we did at Sunny Acres recently. I mean, that was a private.
Yep.
Function, but you know, there's people that, that do that kind of work too for the town that we maybe would recognize in a similar manner.
Well, I agree with that. And I think it was, it was well deserved. And you know, that family's been doing it for 75 years and it served the town well. And, but I guarantee you 98% of the people in town, if you mention their name, they wouldn't even, couldn't relate to it. And, you know, unfortunately, but.
Right.
So that's type of problem. But I do think that, you know, whatever somebody has as a suggestion, it should come through some type of government or, you know.
Right.
Or committee.
Right. Yeah. That's like I said, that was the initial thought for it. It, it just seems, you know, and, and the reason why I, I proposed having a, a small committee do it, or maybe even a subcommittee of this board. Is because it's awkward to me when they come up to that podium and they've already decided where it's going to be, what it's going to be. You know, how it's going to be presented and, you know, without any prior input from, from this board or from DPW or anybody else that might have some. You know, some input on it. So. So where do we go?
So. I mean, I have a couple of comments with respect to the, the words here that came to mind. But philosophically, I've been, I'm struggling with the conversation that you're having basically is. One, can we even staff another committee? We have so many boards and committees and, that have vacancies. And would it be better served by having this be in the select board policies as guidance? And then maybe you do have, maybe as part of the chair appointments, there's two people assigned to memorial, to vet memorial requests each year.
Like an.
So that would be like an alternate approach. I think all the work that's been done here is really valuable. And I think it should be documented somewhere, whether it's a formal committee or guidance in the select board policies. I did have a couple of things like, that I noticed, like we talk about making recommendations. An item three on change, charge for the monuments and memorials committee. It says make recommendations for issuing other awards such as proclamations. Well, we kind of have to deconflict that because we have a separate policy for proclamations. And so this, I mean, would this be something like where we just recently declared someone, somebody's named a in Chelmsford? Like, or did we, did we falter and not follow our own proclamation policy on that one?
But if you look at our policy, it does allow that. If you look at our, our policy currently.
For what? Our policy for what?
For doing something like that, like naming a day for somebody.
Right. But does it, was it, is it supposed to come through the board first?
No, no, it does not require that. Look at the policy.
Okay. Well, if it's required or not.
Anyway, yeah.
So I, I just question whether having proclamations in here is something we want because we have a separate policy on proclamations. And then in providing recommendations, the next paragraph down, it says the jurisdiction of the school committee or conservation commission. And at a different place in the policy, we bring in the library trustees and others. So I think we're just missing a little bit of language there to cover.
You're right.
And then my other thought was based on a comment Paul made last time we talked about. It says the committee will, and the first bullet says solicit slash accept. And I think Paul made a good point that. Are you, are we really establishing a committee to go solicit inputs? Or is it to vet requests that come through? Like, because this could get unwieldy to George's point. So I might, I might be inclined to, whether this is a committee document or a select board policy document, to say that we'll evaluate recommendations. And those, it doesn't matter where those recommendations come from. And so that, that was my thought on the committee part. And again, I was just, as you were talking and before I came to this meeting, I was wondering, do we, do we think we can actually implement a committee? Keep it staffed and have it work the way we intended? Or would this be better served as a select board policy with maybe a subcommittee if you want an initial entry point before it comes to the board? And then the only other thing I would do is go back to the request form one more time and make sure that we're covering the criteria that we laid out in the policy, like we're asking for the same criteria.
Okay.
Site, you've got, just for example, and not site specifics, community value, impact, aesthetics, maintenance. Do we want spaces in here where the requister at least makes a recommendation or gives a thought about that and how it fits? So that it's documented when it comes to the select board or to the committee? Do you know what I'm saying?
No.
Okay. In the policy, it says the following guidelines must be addressed with the request.
Right.
A, site specifics, B, community value, C, impact. And so my only thought when I went back and looked at this again, is if you look at the, the request form, we're not asking for that information.
Okay.
From the requister. So would we want to consider modifying the request form to get more specific about some of those things? So that it's not just a loosey goosey conversation that we've actually got something documented from the requister.
Yeah. A lot of times the board, a lot of people on the board probably, they're going to be, there's going to be nominations about people that they've never, you know, came along before they were even around.
I think to Pat's point, the first order is to decide whether we want a committee or whether we want to implement it some other way. And then I think there's a lot of good work here. We just pull it together and whatever the final document or set of documents is.
I think keeping it, is it something like a subcommittee of the board is.
An annual appointment.
Yeah. Or like, I don't know which one of you said, maybe, maybe two members that, that they would.
Right. Well, I, yeah, I was thinking like we, we appoint liaisons at the beginning of each, after each election cycle. So maybe that's one of the appointments that happens for that coming year.
Yeah. I mean, that works. Like you said, because I think it would be difficult to recruit people that, you know, I mean. People might get on the committee just for a, because they have a, a.
Right. And you don't want it to turn into like a crusade for, or, or just like I said, have a committee that's difficult to staff because.
For the case of longevity, I guess, it might be helpful to have. I don't know. It might be helpful to have people who know a lot about the existing monuments and whatever that we have in town. And people that will kind of stay on long term so that they have a better understanding of what's already existing.
Well, I, I think we can.
You know what I mean?
We can, we can get an inventory of that pretty easily and keep, maintain it.
Yeah.
Maybe that's part of the policy is there's an, there's an inventory maintained.
Right. And in fact, I was looking back through my, my notes. I was on a civic committee and I still have some, some documents from that. And, and Paul did provide a, a list of, of currently used, I guess you could say, spaces and available spaces. So that's pretty much, yeah, I mean, it probably needs some, some edits to it, but that's, you know, probably seven or eight years old, but, so it has been started. So, okay. Well, I can take another run at it then. And, and yeah, I think that makes, that makes more sense. And, you know, just so it as an ad, as needed type of.
Yeah. Do you have any other?
No, no, I think, I, I, I agree. I think that what you're struggling with as an outsider is the breadth of the type of monuments and memorials is so significant. I mean, it could be something as simple as a place in a park towards naming a building. And I think that's what you're struggling with. And, and therefore I think you're right. I think if you have it as a subcommittee of the select board, and then as an issue arises, the select board, the subcommittee can then report back to the whole board. And then you. And then you may want to create a.
Like an ad hoc.
An ad hoc committee to address a particular concern. Yeah, and I think that'd probably be the most effective way of doing it.
I agree.
Okay. Okay. I'll make another.
Thank you again, Pat.
Another run at it. Okay, next up is town manager reports.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Just a brief report this evening, and the first one is regarding chapter forty B affordable housing development requests for project eligibility letters. Since your last meeting, two applications have been submitted to your office. And they're thick binders, and one, one pertains to a location at thirty, make sure I got the location correct here. Because, the first one has to, has to do with the project that's known as Crosby Village LLC, which is the company that's providing this. And this location was submitted on January tenth into our office. And how, and this would be for ten units located basically at, at the intersection of Crosby Road and North Road. So this has been shared with you, it's been shared with town council. I've also shared it with the chair of the Board of Appeals because this project ultimately, if it were to advance, would go before the Board of Appeals. Subsequent to that, on January eleventh, we received an application for a project eligibility letter into your office regarding forty-seven Boston Place, which is located at forty-seven Boston Road. And that project, you know, would, would talk about sixteen dwelling units. So, in, in consultation with town council, what town council suggests is that prior to receiving the, you know, formal notification from the state, that the board meet with the applicant, each applicant, and then basically that would provide you with more time in, because there's a, you know, timeframe, to prepare whatever comments that the town may have to the state in response to these applications. My suggestion would be is maybe you do that at one per meeting in February. So in other words, do one on the twelfth, and then do one on the twenty-sixth.
So they'd be in public?
So they'd be in public.
Okay.
And then council would be present, and then you would have a discussion with the applicant, what they're proposing and so forth. And then, and then the next meeting, have, have, repeat that process with, and so that's, that's the guidance that council suggests, that Paul Haverde, our town council, suggests. And then that way, when the determination comes down to the state that, you know, here, here's the formal request from the state for comment from the community, that that's what happened. Now, again, I don't want people to accuse, this is not a local, these are not local initiative projects, so it's not, the select board will not be formally partnering on the project, but you do have a comment period.
It's all go to the.
It's going to go through the Board of Appeals, right. So, so that's basically, so that's what tonight's purpose is about, is basically just to formally notify the board, you know, that these applications have arisen since your last meeting, and that the advice of council is to proceed with meeting with each of the applicants, you know, in advance of the formal notification for the state for comment. There's not, the, the comment period from the state is normally thirty days. Again, you can ask for an extension, but again, we want to be mindful of, of the, you know, the timeliness that the applicants are seeking.
When do we expect the thirty-day period?
When we get, we get the notification from the state. We, we've only received formal notification from the state on the first application so far.
So that thirty-day clock is ticking?
No, no, that they've, that they've received it. We haven't received, well, you'll receive a formal letter saying, we see the comment, we request, you know, the town's comment on this application. And, and I, I will just say this because there's been a lot of confusion, and there probably will be going forward. The, there's no, there's no. What, let me just check, okay. The town had met its certification under the twenty-twenty, twenty-ten census numbers. As was discussed, and we were in this, in this room several months ago, Evan Blansky, the twenty-twenty census numbers, we, we fell below the ten percent threshold based on the expanded count. The town, as was explained at that time, will, will rise back up to the ten percent once the units that have been approved by the town go back on the subsidized housing inventory. And what that means is, since, basically, a forty-B project goes on your subsidized housing inventory when it's approved by the community, but then it only remains twelve months unless a building permit is filed. And as we know, the units at the west campus at two fifty-five Princeton Street is, is more than a year ago, so they are not on the town's inventory. What will happen is the building permits have been submitted for the Trammell Crowe portion of the project, and that's six units. So when they obtain a building permit, and then, and then with, let's say by the end of next month, those six units will go on the inventory. The bulk of the units, which were the choice units, that, you know, the nonprofit subsidiary of the Chelmsford Housing Authority, those units will push us over the threshold. But that's a ways out because at this point, Trammell Crowe is not closed on the property because they cannot close until they obtain their building permits. And then the choice units was always, was always a lag behind the Trammell Crowe project because Trammell Crowe was putting in the infrastructure and so forth. So that's a long-winded way of saying, the process that I've described and what, and discussions with council, in no way will jeopardize the eligibility for these projects. Because, you know, there's, it's not like, oh, the Chelmsford Housing Authority Choice Project is going to, you know, get issued a permit in the next thirty days and we'll, you know, nudge them out. Because I know there's been some confusion, if you read some of the fine print in one of the applications, it was, it was referenced. So anyway, so, so anyway, so I guess the point is, is that's where we are today. At, at, at the board's direction, I would reach out to the applicant for the first project that was submitted, see if they can come into your meeting in February. I'll also check with council for his availability, and then do, and then do the second one at the second meeting. Might, I mean, you could do them both at the same meeting, I just think that's going to take a lot of time.
It isn't.
Is it the same applicant?
No, there's two separate applicants, there's two separate applications. I just think it would just, I think it would just take a lot of time and, and, and also if you're going to have others in attendance, I just think.
That was, that was one of my other questions.
I just think it'd be better to do that, yeah.
Could we, could we also have department heads at least prepare a written.
Yep.
Response or recommendation.
And then the other thing I think we would do as a courtesy is, when those are scheduled, I think we would also send out a letter to the three hundred-foot abutters. In, in, you know, the, the abutters, you know, that, that are in those particular areas, so at least that way they're notified. Again, it's not a lip project, but we would treat it.
Can we include, can we include, not necessarily debate or question and answer, but can we include public input on our agenda?
Yes.
We can, but it's not a public hearing.
I understand, but we could at lea, if, it, it could inform the questions that we ask too, and I, and it would help people.
Exactly.
So, we, the, the process is the board, the board will be asked for input on the applications to provide to the state.
Right, as it makes its project eligibility determination.
And then the zone, the, the final, the, the processing, the final processing of it goes through the ZBA?
Mm-hmm, yes, in other words, once, once the state issues the project eligibility letter, which is what the, each applicant is seeking, that then allows them to submit to the Board of Appeals for the forty-B comments of project. And then that's when the formal process takes place, where all abutters are notified, advertise public hearings, everybody comes in, they hold hearings, and then issue a decision. But yeah, that's how it works. So I think what we're doing here is, is we're giving advance, well, giving formal notice to the community that these have been submitted to the select board, and then we're going to engage the process recommended by council for the board to provide its comments.
I don't remember who our liaison is, but is anybody just letting the ZBA know of like what our plan is, just so that?
Yes, I, I've forwarded these applications to the Chair of the Board of Appeals. I will inform him of what, how the board will, plans to move forward, yeah.
I'm the liaison, by the way. So, those of us that have a hard copy, we may want to keep these, these documents out so they don't have to reprint all that.
Yes.
Hundreds of pages again when it's time to do these, you know, unless anything changes.
And again, if people are interested, it's on, all you do is click on our agenda, you can see the full applications for information, so. Again, why I'm belaboring this is it's been a while since.
It has been.
The town has done a forty-B project, and I just wanted to, you know, be deliberate in terms of explaining the process in this case, where it's not a local initiative project, but it, it's a forty-B project that is seeking project eligibility at this point, which will involve comment from the select board.
The one on Riverneck Road, that's been taken off our, I mean, has it been?
They've not, we've not received anything. I know that they've appeared before.
No, the, the original one, I'm sorry.
Right, the original one is not, but I know that the Housing Advisory Committee has received, has net with a, a project. But we've not received any, we've not received a similar application for.
No, I meant way back.
Oh, yeah, way back, yeah, that's gone.
Two hundred and twenty.
Yeah, that's gone. That's, that's, that's no longer on the inventory and no longer an eligible project.
They did, they did get it, you know, extended a few times.
Right, and then, and then there was a severance there between the parties and.
I think it went back to the original.
Right. All right, so I will, I will proceed with that schedule for February. Okay. The next item I have is hopefully a little less lengthy, and I'll, rather than bypass all that part of the agenda, let's go to the email. I'm providing you with the draft warrant for the two thousand and four spring annual town meeting, which is on April twenty-ninth. Again, overview of the process, tonight I give you a draft, three weeks from tonight, your next regularly scheduled meeting on February twelfth, I'll provide you with a second draft. And then you will, you're scheduled to sign the warrant on February twenty-sixth. So at this point, it's a draft, there's twenty-five, actually there's twenty-six. I omitted and will add to the next draft, an article regarding the school feasibility funding for the MSBA. And, and speaking with Dr. Lang, as recently as again this morning, our recommendation is that, that even though we cannot commence with the expenditure of any funds until we're invited into the feasibility stage, we have to have a vote of funding before, prior to the end of the calendar year. And so the thought is, well, you go to spring town meeting or you go to fall town meeting. Our thought is to go to spring town meeting, and the reason for that is twofold. One is, we, we really want to make the community aware that there's an application of project eligibility out there for the town of Chelmsford for a new middle school. In talking to people in the community, and some even in the school community, that, that there isn't that full awareness of that. And so I think that will heighten the awareness because it's going to be on the spring town meeting warrant, hopefully be reported, there'll be an, an expenditure request to borrow funds for that project. And I think it also helps the town meeting members, you know, by getting it them, to them early, and then that way, if there are any issues and so forth, you know, we have time. It's very similar to what we're doing with the MBTA zoning thing. You know, we have to the end of the calendar year, but don't wait to the end of the calendar year, let's come in April early. And then that way, if issues arise, it's sufficient time. So that will be added to this warrant. Beyond that, it's twenty-six articles, and the, basically, this is a very traditional spring annual town meeting warrant. If you, but for the exception of the MBTA zoning articles, there's nothing else on the warrant other than financial operations of the towns, you know, meaning the town's operating budget, enterprise funds, community preservation commission, and then a few miscellaneous financial aspects. So that's what this warrant is, and, and one thing I want to note, and forgive me for the time, the reason I placed the two zoning articles at the end of the warrant is not out of disrespect for the MBTA zoning process. What I envision happening, and what I would suggest to the moderator and to the board and to town meeting, is the second session of town meeting, regardless of where we are on that warrant, that you start that second night with the MBTA zoning. You know, in other words, a fresh night, people come in fresh, rested and so forth, and as long as it takes, it takes. And that's, that, but, and therefore, rather than trying to hazard a guess as to, well, when that might occur, and that, since those are the only, basically zoning articles related, and, and anything aside from the financial aspects of the talent, I place it at the end of the warrant. Because I know, anyway, so that's what I thought was the appropriate manner of doing that.
So that means you're going to change the school feasibility to number twenty-four and then shift these out?
No, I'm going to put school feasibility right after capital because it's, it really is related. It's going to go right up after number seven is my thought, and then that would be the, the twenty-six articles. So that would, and, and again, unless something else arises for, you know, so, but that's where we stand today in terms of the warrant. As you can see, most, this is what you traditionally see at every spring town meeting, the reports, amending the current budget, you know, Noshobat Tech assessment, school budget, general government budget, reserve fund, capital budget, enterprise funds, enterprise funds equipment, and, you know, revolving funds, cemetery funds, so forth. The only thing that, 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 in the community preservation and in the, in the articles that they recommended last Wednesday, the only thing that is sort of outside of that is article twenty-three, and that's accepting the provisions of Mass General Law, chapter thirty-three, section nine, fifty-nine, regarding military service renumeration. And remember, that came from the discussion we had with, recently with the police. The request here is to extend that to all general government employees, you know, employees of the town. So, so if a DPW employee is in the reserves and gets called to military service, then that person would have those same rights of being, you know, not suffering a pay, a compensation. I, you know, I think it's reasonable, and, and I would expect the town would support that, so. But other than that, the zoning article is a draft, obviously council is, is in the midst of reviewing that. And so again, you may see some changes in verbiage, but, but essentially, this is it. And again, I'll come back with another draft in three weeks, and then the final reviewed by council for your signature on the twenty-sixth of February.
My only comment, Paul, is that the middle school and the MBTA are unusual events, or unique events. And maybe there might be some planning ahead with the presenters of that and the moderator, even if they need an extra five minutes. You know, it, it might not make sense to limit those to ten-minute presentations if you're going to wind up with a line out the door of questions because they don't have adequate time to present the facts and the information.
Yep. Okay, thank you. And again, if people are watching you click on the warrant, you will see the, the agenda for this meeting, you can see the text of the draft warrant as well as the list of articles. And then the last thing I have, and, and there's no, there's no materials on it because it's basically happening in real time, is, is development of the, of the town manager's proposed fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five operating budget. Boy, this is happening, basically, the reason that this board is scheduling the meet this coming Monday, a week from tonight, is in accordance with the town's charter and bylaws, I have to release a fiscal year operating budget. And I'm prepared to do so and will do so. The information is, is changing in real time. What I mean by that is, the Chair and I attended the Mass Municipal Association Annual Meeting last Friday and Saturday. And last Friday, the governor announced a series of measures for cities and towns, which again is only proposed legislation, none of, none of which we will factor into the budget, and many of which have been widely reported by now in the, you know, news, print news media, and, and I guess also, you know, video news media. So those are, have an uncertain legislative future and probably won't get resolved until the end of the legislative session. So we're not banking on, gee, will the governor provide additional, the community to, to provide additional rooms tax, or additional meals tax, or a search charge on motor vehicle excise, or so forth. That's going to play out through the process, what it is. What was more substantive is the governor announced her proposed funding, which is going to be released two nights from now, two days from now on Wednesday, for chapter seventy funding for communities across the Commonwealth and unrestricted general government aid. I'll start with a simple one first. The governor announced that she'll be increasing in her proposed fiscal year twenty-five state budget, a three percent increase in unrestricted general government aid. Traditionally, in recent years, that's been tied to the growth of the state budget. It's our understanding is that their calculation is the state budget will grow by two percent, but she's proposing three percent. And as, as is custom in the past, we will utilize the governor's numbers because they generally have been the benchmark in, in previous legislative sessions. Because again, we won't see the House budget till the end of April. we won't see the House budget till the end of April, the Senate budget till the end of May, and then conference resolution and final budget probably till July. So again, we, it's the best information that we have. So those numbers are good, and that was a bit of, a little bit of bright news. What does that mean? The Town of Chelmsford will receive a, a total of 6.25 million in unrestricted general government aid. That's an increase of $182,000 over the current fiscal year's level, or 3%. Okay. Again, a little bit of better news, we got about a $60,000 gain from what we were seeing there. The bad news, relatively, is on Chapter 70 funding, the Governor proposes, you know, gave out numbers for all the cities and towns and school districts. For Chelmsford, the number was 14.4 million. That's an increase of 269, 369,000, or 1.9%, roughly $60 per student. You may remember, and I'm sure you do, a year ago, we, we were sort of well, well surprised that the town became no longer a minimal, minimal aid community, and we were receiving Chapter 70 adjustments, because at that point we got $1.1 million of an increase to, to, to Chapter 70 funding. We didn't know until the Governor released, well, what's, what's the subsequent year? And right now, that went down from 1.1 million increase to 260, $369,000 increase, or 1.9%, which isn't, which isn't even inflationary. Okay? So again, that's the best information that we have. That's obviously dampening what, what we had expected at this point in time, you know, with the uncertainty. I've obviously shared that news with Dr. Lang. He was, he's obviously disappointed. I did share the number that we saw from Neshoba Tech with Dr. Pigeon. She, she was okay. She was like within 10,000 of the estimate that they had worked on with Roger Hatch for their, for their committee. So, bottom line is tighter in terms of unrestricted gen-, I'm sorry, Chapter 70 aid. So, we just got to deal with it. What we won't know, and what I won't know until, and nobody will know until either late Wednesday or Thursday morning, is what is the entire package of local aid revenues and local aid assessments? So for the town, that means, well, how are we being assessed for charter schools and so forth? What assistance are we receiving for reimbursement for veterans aid and so forth? So we won't know those final numbers until, again, either late Wednesday or Thursday morning. Again, as soon as I have those numbers that I have in the past, I'll share them with you and try to highlight what it means in terms of how it compares with the current numbers. So, now, that's, that's sort of where things stand right now. How it matters for the vocational schools, they're going to show protect, they don't know the regional transportation number, because that hasn't been released. But that, that'll be a critical number as they move forward on, you know, to finalize, because remember, we're coming up to their schedule. They're, they're having the municipal breakfast on February 1st, which is next week. So again, everything is moving in real time. In terms of the development of the operating budget, again, it is tight. When I say that, let me give you perspective. In talking to Dr. Pigeon and in talking to my colleagues over the weekend at the Municipal Association Meeting, we are seeing a number of our neighboring communities in financial distress. They're talking overrides in the Town of Westford. You, you keep hearing about and reading about the difficulties they're having in the Town of Drakeett with their budget. Going back to Neshoba Tech, you know, the two largest enrollment communities of Townsend and Chelmsford, Townsend feeling a squeeze because of their enrollment issue. I think we're going to see a larger than normal increase because of our enrollment issues at Neshoba Tech. But just looking out, you know, communities of Groton are looking at overrides, Acton looking at overrides. And I'm not talking nominal overrides. If, if, you know, you, you're looking at significant requests for funding, and it just reflects what, what we've talked about in the tri-board meetings and in general, you're in a, we're in this peculiar period of where inflation is above two, you know, has been above two and a half percent, and then you've got a tight labor market, and you're seeing capital costs and other costs increasing significantly. We're not immune from that. I, I will not be proposing nor will we see an override in the Town of Chelmsford for this year, but what you're going to see is, is a tight budget. I've met with all the department heads. I've not committed to them on anything because of the uncertainty. I can't commit to them. But what I have committed to them is you're, you're essentially a level staffing budget, because, and in fact, we have some positions I'm not filling right now because of the uncertainty of the process. I don't think we're going to be able to honor the requests that the schools are looking for and their initial discussion that they had. I just don't see it happening. You know, if you, you know, the numbers on health insurance look a little better, you know, those, that range was announced on Saturday. So, you know, we're, we're probably looking around a 6% or so number on health insurance. But again, 6% is above 2.5%. So anyway, long story short, I will have, I will get you the information as it happens in real time in terms of the release of the cherry sheets from the Department of Revenue based on the Governor's budget late Wednesday or Thursday morning. The Finance Director and I will be working diligently through then, and I will get you the packets and materials as soon as I can, because it's not just plugging in the numbers, it's plugging in the cherry sheet numbers, balancing the budget, and then writing a narrative and, and presentation materials. So I hope to have that for you as soon as I can. In the worst case, we'll post the agenda for, 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 for Monday's meeting on Thursday, because we have to by statute, and then we'll get the packets out as soon as we can. The goal obviously is to get them to you before the weekend. I'd like to, you know, to do it, you know, by Friday morning, it, it just, we, I just don't know, but I will do the-
We do have, our next meeting is next Monday.
Yeah, yeah, but, yeah, it's a special meeting, because-
And then we have one the week after?
Two weeks after, two weeks after. So we're meeting-
And the reason we have it next week is because Paul has to present that to us by-
Right. And I'm trying to keep everything else off that, but there might be a couple miscellaneous things on that agenda. I know Bill Gillette wants to come in for a brief presentation regarding vinyl square. And then I will, I do want to cover, which I didn't want to squeeze into tonight's agenda, there was a letter that was also released since the last meeting regarding the Attorney General's response to the Town of Milton, which is debating whether to comply with the MBTA zoning. I've shared that letter with you, but I will share it with the community if they haven't seen it or read about it already. But clearly, the Attorney General is basically saying that a community is subject to not only the loss of funding from state programs, but you're also subject to potential litigation by not complying with the, with the MBTA zoning. So again, I'll try to keep the agenda as streamlined as possible, because I'll be working on the draft agenda tomorrow to get it out, you know, to you on Wednesday, and then post it on Thursday. So that's where we are with the, with the, with the budget. It's very tight, and it's not tight for anything other than the fact is, you're seeing what's happening with the state, you know, and the, the, in most recent news that wasn't here at our last meeting was, through the first, I think, 12 days of January, the state took in 13.9% less revenue than it did a year prior. And obviously, you're seeing a lot of concern and a lot of policy decisions made at the state level. So we, we will, we will produce because we have to. But I just wanted to let you know, as I've tried to do at this meeting, as to how things. And the other thing I want to note, in terms of substance of the town's budget, the one thing that I am including in the budget is, is, is the financial support for the Chelmsford Center for the Arts in the operating budget. I've heard loud and clear from this board, from the community, that the town, you know, values the Chelmsford Center for the Arts and wants that to maintain and operate. It's become abundantly clear through three directors, as well as private interests who've looked at that property, that the capacity of the facility does not allow it to operate financially independently, because the 200 seating capacity, you know, doesn't sustain that. So I'm working with the director. I, I sat with Lauren Cochran along with Finance Director John Suzer and Town Accountant Darlene Lucier, reviewed their budget, and, you know, in terms of how, how they can move forward in a financially responsible manner, i.e. what revenue do they take in from their operations and concessions and so forth versus their costs, and then what overhead does the town have to cover. And so you will see that in the budget that I'll be proposing at this point in time, based on the information as it stands today. That's probably the only material difference than what, than where we are operating today. And the reason for that is the, the earmarks and ARPA funding and everything else will be exhausted by the end of this fiscal year, and that will allow the organization to continue into the future. So, thank you for your time. Yes?
These are town manager reports, so-
Yep.
From the budget perspective, if we want to discuss any of these, we should do that next week?
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
That's, that's going to be the main focus of next week's meeting, yeah.
Yeah.
And we've already heard a, a good preview of it.
Yeah.
No, I'm, I'm just one on the-
And again, I-
I'll hold my, my questions till next week.
There are other competing, invaluable and worthy and noble funding requests. I, I just don't want to expound upon them right now, just because of the, the level of uncertainty in terms of the funding. But we, we will get into those, and, and then, you know, then they'll go to the FinCom process and, and then ultimately back to the select board in April, and then to town meeting at the end of April. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, meeting minutes. We have a set from January 8th, 2024. Anybody have any edits or corrections on those?
I have two. On page three, there's a heading that says Town Council, Paul Haverty, Review of Citizen Petition. On the fifth line, it says, referencing a letter he sent to the Select Board in early December regarding Attorney Haverty reiterated. The word regarding should be deleted. And then my second amendment is, I had input a quote, a comment on the supporting documents to add the letter from Christine Bowman that was distributed during public input, because that was used during the meeting, and it should be kept with the records. And that, it looks like that was just inadvertently omitted, so I would, I would add that and put it with the meeting minutes.
Okay. Well, do you have a copy of that letter? Do you know?
You do.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you can, you can scan it in and give them the electronic version.
All right. Okay, and also I want to announce-
Do you want me to make a motion?
Yeah. I just want-
I will make a, are there any other amendments? Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes as amended for January 8th, 2023.
Twenty-four.
Oh, it says 20, 2024. I just read the agenda.
Oh.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And I'll make an announcement about our executive session meeting minutes from, from November 6th, 2023, that, that can be released. Okay, and now with two liaison reports. George, you have anything?
Uh, I, I met with the LRTA Director, and regarding some of the conversations we had last week about appointments and things like that, they would like to help out, if, maybe help out, get together with some of the people, help out on, on some of the appointments and things like that.
Main transportation.
Yeah. Getting through, you know, the appointments and all that type of thing. So.
Should, should he meet with Jen about, I mean, would that make sense, or who? Or the Senior Center?
I don't know. I think he'd like to have one more appoint, he'd like to have maybe one more conversation first. He came to the house just to, I don't know what it was, it was something about, you know, they used to give out things for Christmas though, you know what I mean? And he hadn't been, couldn't find me, I guess.
Okay, so we'll wait for more.
So, but he was very excited about that, man, you know. And I said, well, because we had just had the meeting, and so, I mean, it's almost like they could take care of the whole thing. They mean, maybe we could use one or two of our drivers and maybe probably pay them, because that's their only problem. But, you know, they go around the clock, so.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we'll have to see.
I don't know if there's any interest. I don't know if they'll be stepping on somebody's toes. I'm just saying.
We can check it out. All right, thanks. Erin? Virginia?
No.
Okay, and I have a, a couple. Couple of weeks ago, we had a ribbon cutting at Masala Cafe, which is an Indian restaurant up at 313 Littleton Road. You should check it out, really good food. And as was referred to earlier, about a week and a half ago, we had an event over at Sunny Acres, where there were kind of like two presentations, two people that were, that were recognized. Shirley Eaton, her family has been running the Sunny Acres Nursing Home since it was founded 75 years ago, so she definitely deserved the recognition for that. And she has worked with the new management company called EF Senior Living, who has taken over management of Sunny Acres. So just want to make those two announcements. And also, as Paul mentioned, Neshoba is having their local officials' breakfast next Thursday, February 1st, at 9:30 at the Viking Forum. If you can make it, that's, you know, you'll get a lot of good information and a good, good healthy breakfast. And lastly, for the friends and family of Barbara Rennison, who was a longtime fixture in the Town of Chelmsford, she's, she worked with Friends at the Library and Friends at the Senior Center, and so many other activities around town.
Paul Center?
Paul, right, Paul Center, exactly. She passed away last week, so condolences to her family. So that is all I have, and we are ready for another motion.
At 7:45, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Nice. At least I remembered that.